Science is going today?
No, I've been here for a little too long.
You actually killed it this year. Jase Recker. I'd love to do a...
What was the...
It's about two.
Right.
Let's follow the... Let's all stand with flags and move. Ready, begin.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see everybody here. We have some really interesting things to celebrate today. A for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I still know.
Second. Vote please.
One item, one change. We could item four A's to be approved for the agenda. Please take that in. So we just have a minute to... A motion to approve as an amendment.
All right, thank you. A motion to approve as an amendment? We have a motion. This was a second. And a second amendment. The amendment they have not very much. Okay, so we go to... Superintendent Tammons reports some recent additions.
Okay, we get to start with some incredibly fun stuff. And we are going to start with honoring seventy years of coaching excellence for Sandy Inez High School. And we would like to introduce here in just a moment here. We're gonna have Mr. Avery say a couple of things. But Coach Chip Fennega and Coach Steve Gunning for combined seventy years of coaching and service to our students.
Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take this moment to help celebrate phenomenal coaching careers of two of our finest coaches in the school's history. First, let me begin by talking about Steve Gunning. He's wearing the Dodger hat in the back in case you don't recognize him and his humbleness. Steve, over the course of his history, has impacted many, many lives. And the coaching career is not just about seasons that you've done, but lives that you've been involved with, lives that you've guided and changed. And again, such a great, great person and a great coach. Some of you may not know this, but he coached three years of varsity wrestling, four years of JV baseball, four years of freshman boys basketball, three years of girls freshman basketball, twenty-five years of JV football, seven years of varsity football, ten years of boys and girls each season, so that's like twenty years of boys, girls JV tennis, three years of varsity boys tennis, and two years of track. And if you add all those years together, you get legend. Steve Gunning.
Yes, please. It is... I'm gonna get a picture.
Sounds good. He'll do anything for my picture.
Well, I think if I deserve recognition for anything, it would be most number of victories combined sports, JV level.
And now for Ronald Chip Fennega. He, again, legendary. I imagine that once he retires from teaching, he's got some years ahead of him. Once he retires from teaching, he would then be eligible to be nominated for the CIF Coaching Hall of Fame, which I'm certain will be soon. But he asked to retire from teaching for some time. Can't just because he retired from coaching. So I guess the trend is already to go back and coaching after that or something. Chip had four years of girls JV volleyball coaching, ten years of girls varsity volleyball, eight years of boys JV volleyball, and twenty-nine years of boys varsity volleyball. In that time, his teams won twenty-three league titles for the boys, seven league titles for the girls. In addition, his teams won seven CIF titles. I believe within those seven, at least one time, they were ranked number one in the country by Boys Volleyball Magazine. Were mythical national championship or just ranked number one in the country?
Mythical twice.
Mythical national championship. Okay, so they don't have a national tournament. They couldn't finish the rankings. And national champions twice? That's unheard of. And then three CIF runner-up titles. That means ten CIF finals altogether. Twenty-nine years in a row of league championships. And he had a winning streak of never losing a league game, I think until my son got here.
That was the year Steve helped me.
So he started the program. He was the only boys coach in the history of the Pirate Volleyball Program for boys until this year, when we had Craig Scott join the program. He was on the sidelines for all twenty-nine years of the boys program to extend to their thirty years. So this is the first year that they had without Chip on the sideline. And I just want to say congratulations to Chip for an amazing coaching tenure.
I didn't really want the data come like this, actually.
Steve?
Yes?
Mr. Swannets. We need a picture with the rest of you who indulge us for just a moment.
Cory, if you want to come on up here as well.
Thank you, thank you, Grima. All in love, listening to Steve says, I just want to say, twenty-nine years, I had the best seat in the house.
Thanks so much. And we're not staying. We'll be out after that.
Friend, if I see you in the house, she's not here.
Okay, so we would like to move on. We have two, two short other... Another recognition piece actually coming from Mr. Swannets, and then we'll hear from Viviana.
Thank you, Mr. Cory. I just want to recognize some teachers and students for some accomplishments that I'm very proud of today. First, each year, ten special people from San Barbara County are chosen to receive a San Barbara Teachers Federal Credit Union Crystal Apple Educator Award. Nominated for this award by their peers, these hardworking educators are recognized for their dedication to student education, their instructional and motivational skills, and their ability to challenge and inspire their students. Also, for their effective interaction with students, staff, and the local community. School employees, colleagues, parents, and students, staff, and the local community nominate these educators who they feel have provided exceptional service to students. I am honored to report that our own Peggy Kelly has been awarded a Crystal Apple winner this year. She won of ten of those ten distinguished educators. She was nominated by Kathy Feyre, a teacher at Pontiff School, and also the parent of some students who had maybe the teacher in class when they were students here. Peggy is just the second SYHS teacher to be awarded this award in the history of the Crystal Apple. It's a sixteen-year history of the award. Vicki Story, legendary librarian here, won the award in the very first year it was offered back in 2002. Peggy will receive her Crystal Apple at the San Barbara County Education Office's annual education celebration dinner, which will be held at the Marriott on May 23rd. So very proud of Peggy for that. At that same event, our own Rob Hill, auto shop teacher, will be awarded an SBCO Care for the Earth grant to implement programs in the auto shop which promote energy conservation, reducing air pollution, water supply, conservation, and recycling. So we're also proud of Rob. That's an initiative that he took to apply for that at work. He wants to do some innovative things in the shop. Keeping a theme of environmental responsibility, I want to mention that... That his own students, measured by Cheryl Lee, RDO production teacher, won the first place for their thirty-second Wild Water Saver Public Announced Public Service Announcement for Santa Barbara County's Water Wise Program. Josh Gazali and Malia Hunter each received a certificate of $250. A certificate and $250. Diane Gomez, Estrella, Barrosa, Alana Urza, and Christina Munoz also won an Honorable Mention Certificate and a gift card to a car wash one that uses recycled water, of course. And they won that for their PSA entitled, Drippy the Water Saver. As a result of these three students outstanding work, our RDO program has also gifted a combined total of $1,100 to support their efforts to educate students in those arts. And finally, I'm sorry he's not here to hear this, but finally, students in Chip Fennega's East Program have also been raking in recognition and awards. Namely, Hannah Gechter designed the 2019 Airport Day poster for community member Bob Perry in the airport porch. You've probably seen that around town. Jason Magomas designed the 2019 Santa Barbara County Track and Field Championship for Ashley Coelo. And that was featured on T-shirts, which you'll also see around town regularly. And Greta Stahl and Eduardo Placencia Ariaga designed the new Refugio logo for the Cisco Bonisay. A sharp-looking new logo that you will also soon see on T-shirts around town. And Mateo Del Solar was selected by the Ronan Barrett Foundation for his fiftieth Woodstock anniversary logo for their upcoming fundraiser. And he will be awarded a $500 prize tomorrow and a ceremony can be held in my office. So just wanted to brag a little bit about our staff and students. They're doing great things.
Thank you, Mr. Swannets. Enough words to represent it. Viviana's lead.
Hello, I'm Viviana Sevilla and I'm for ASC Borra. We are finally done with prom, which turned out to be a total success. We're now focused on Power Club, which will occur this Friday at the Fullback Field at six o'clock. We're also finished with ASC elections and now have our executive council and past president slash vice president. To sum up, we cannot be anywhere excited to finish off strong such a great eventful year. Thank you so much.
Any questions for Viviana?
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are going to move on to our next presentation, which is Refugio High School. So if we can have Mrs. Goodgumis come on up before that happens. However, you've heard Mr. Swannets reference earlier that we have two students, Greta Stahl and Eduardo Ariaga, creating the new RHS logo. Creating a new school logo is a big deal. And so it's a process that Mrs. Goodgumis wanted to do with the students. You'll see that logo up there. It's actually a dark green on the wings. But students actually were a part of making that selection. So this will come to represent Refugio High School out there, and they'll see that displayed prominently in many places. We wanted to recognize, though, the work of that. Again, seeing the logo being a big deal. Eduardo and Greta, are you here? Please come on up.
Just Eduardo.
Eduardo is here with his mother. So great work on that one. Help represent Refugio well for years to come. Thanks so much for being here, Eduardo.
Thank you.
All right, we have Mrs. Goodgumis and Mr. Swannets and his company come on up, please. It would be... Right there, it's perfect. Yep, you mentioned it. And so this presentation, given that we are in a very good place with Refugio High School right now, just some great things in store for next year, and want to give credit to the staff that makes that happen. And Bill introduced himself in just a minute, but we certainly have some veteran RHS staffers, some that are new, and then staff that they took over the hill in January. And we're already seeing some really good results as a result of recruiting and position and for leadership and that. And so we just want to share a little bit with you about Refugio this evening, get a chance to ask some questions. I gotta give a ten-minute presentation and then some opportunities for questions once we get to the end. But thank you so much, all of you, for being here. Refugio is a very vital part of what we do in the district. So we turn it over to...
All right, well, thank you for having us. We have some of the staff members. Two people are missing, but we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves. I'm Stephanie Gomis at ABC Borra. Refugio.
Jake Galcowski, science teacher for Refugio.
Diamond Rock counselor.
Patrick Chan, English teacher.
Sarah Gandolfo.
All right, so we also have Sean Nellis, our social science teacher, Jennifer Rasmussen, who does P and electives, and then Diane Rhodes, who's our education specialist.
Well, thirteen.
A new perspective, Refugio Kansas was moved to P-14, P-14 area this school year. The academic dean position was reinstated in January. My main focus is bulleted there that I tried to do throughout the semester that I was there. Attendance was the first thing that I noticed that needed, you know, some fixing. So my goal every day is to be there in the morning classes, greet each student. If I don't see a student there, then I either call their personal cellphone or I get in contact with their parents to find out why aren't they in class. Work completion was another thing that we focused on, maximizing people helping people resources. Now Hector Garcia, he sees all Refugio students. When I was hired, he saw a few of them, so I just made that connection of he needs to see all of the Refugio students since they need his supports as well. Restorative approaches, we have incorporated that. So whenever there is a discipline issue, I do more of a restorative approach with the students. And the learning environment, there was some alterations there. We do have a no-cellphone policy in state. Now, it is up to the teachers if the students are allowed to listen to music in very independent time. We do have a new logo that you saw on the first slide. Super exciting. Students had to pick it. There was like, I think, twenty-five that Chip Fennega gave us. And we just narrowed down from votes and students had to say in their new logo. And with the new logo, I ordered some schools gear so the students could purchase either a hoodie or a T-shirt. The staff have shirts now, too, so it's just something that I wanted to do, we wanted to do to build up morale.
Okay, so a couple of things that are still continuing at Refugio and will continue as long as possible is we really tailor our plans for each individual student. It's not a one-size-fits-all classroom. And so we really, truly work individually with each kid and what their needs are specifically if they are making up credits as well, working in the specific semester that they were, that they needed to recover those credits from. We do three-week credit checks so that the students are very aware of where they stand. It also kind of helps keep them motivated, like, oh, I have to get this in before the next credit check. And it shows their progress every three weeks towards their graduation. So having those three-week credit checks really keeps them hopefully motivated to get the work done in a timely manner instead of just saying there's an entire semester. We hold really high expectations of the students, just as all of our students do. And I think the kids really see that. Oh, it's so hard, I don't want to do this. And I think we do this. And, you know, it kind of goes into the... If we skip one down to the safe and caring environment that we want to show them. We really do care about them and we really want them to succeed, not only in school, but also as just a better person when you leave this place, like our goal for all our students. And so we really work on that safe and caring environment with those students. It's such a small group this year that we really have the opportunity to get to know them individually more as just a person of who they are as a whole and not just my math student for, you know, the hundred minutes that I see them. We do have a lot of school pride this year. They're really excited about the new shirts and sweatshirts. And you'll see them wearing them. I wore one the other day, and the response from the kids was like, oh, you're wearing our shirt today. Like, they are proud to be a part of that school. And they really are really good kids. We do have one-on-one technology, so all the kids have access to computers for the different needs of the classes. They do have access to the afternoon elective classes for auto east and restaurants on the Sandy Inez campus so that they can get the elective credits. And as well, most of them really enjoy those classes because it's something they're very interested in for after high school. And then the last one, we really want to thank Joanne Keen. That's something that's been going on as well as all the kids get a birthday celebration. And I'm gonna embarrass her because Joanne Keen is here in the audience over here. A huge part of the caring environment because she brings cupcakes for all the kids on their birthday, not just a cupcake, but a box of cupcakes for the whole class and a very elaborate, intricate balloon animal. The kids love it and they really look forward to when it's their birthday. I mean, it's something for them to really, to hold on to. So we really do work with those kids and she brings that caring environment.
So some demographics. Then we have, current population is nineteen students. Eight of those are twelfth graders. Seven of them were enrolled at Refugio High School last year. We have two that looked at the district book. One from Carrillo, one from Waukesha. And ones that have transferred from Sandy Inez. There are students here at Sandy Inez. We have ten of those that have transferred over. Mostly male. Seventeen of them are males and we have two females. And one of them just recently graduated out of Chicago. I think that, you know, the population is pretty good. It's about top as far as the number of students we have of the amount of future students, not many kids with the needs that they have into one classroom. Nineteen is, it fills up pretty quick, so.
Reaching for the stars, recognizing high credit achievers and great attendance. This is something we do. So every three weeks, when the students get a credit check back, say whoever earns ten credits or more, you get a gift card to El Rancho from me. And then you get a certificate. And they get their picture, just something to kind of make them proud. So that's one thing. And then same thing with attendance. I just, every so often, just kind of do a little attendance run.
Jennifer Rasmussen can tell you a lot more about this than me, but she's not here.
She's brought the kids on several really cool hikes. And they've gone bowling. And she just believes, you know, as I believe too, they should get outside and get exercise and see some other stuff beside the campus. And that's been a pretty rich part of our program this year. And then what's next is we're gonna have a new location back next year. We're going to be sharing the campus with Allen Hentuck. There is a very high focus on curriculum and instruction. We're gonna try to be very creative and have a lot of fun with project-based learning, cross-curricular opportunities, and universal design for learning.
The new facility will be out by the tennis courts where we were before, is that correct?
I'm not, I, I just thought it was okay to say, but I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
No surprise, they're absolutely...
Yes, yes. I said it and I was like, oh! But I thought Scott looked at me. I won't be there, but... Anyway, yeah.
Sorry for the...
It's all right.
Opportunities for greater success. Piloting a social-emotional curriculum at RHS. So I would like to, if we can, get a social-emotional curriculum at RHS next year. And what I would do is collect the data from the assessments to see, you know, pre and post-assessment to see if it's something that we could implement at Sandy Inez High School as a tier one. Because I believe if it works with our adverse population, then it could definitely work at Sandy Inez. So that may be something to look into. Another thing for just kind of moving forward as a staff, we've been talking a lot about potentially reducing current elective credit requirements. And I will be bringing up a proposal next month for that. Just working with the staff and looking at other sites, others, local continuation-based schools. We are, we have, so we have 230 graduation credits. And typically, I mean, like the other continuations have anywhere from 200 to 210. They're full-day continuation schools. We're kind of finding ourselves trying to, trying to get the kids graduated, but we're stumbling on the elective credits. So, and go ahead, yeah.
Along with that, too, you figure really in a four-period day, we're trying to get six subjects in. And so electives becomes kind of that dangling appendage at times. They can get some in the afternoon, but not all the kids get it. Some are working, some different things. So, you know, staying focused on the academics and reducing the electives, we feel like it's gonna be really beneficial for them for the long run in the academic setting. So that's some, again, more information later, but...
Yeah, and Stephanie and I had talked about this. So typically, if you're looking at reducing the number of credits, I am reducing them. And I agree with her. So we talked about how she was going to make the case, and then she's made a very good case for raising the bar while at the same time reducing graduation parts. So that's a conversation that will...
Do we have our...
In...
Reducing electives.
Correct. Reducing electives. So I believe we did some good things. It'd be great enough. Is that correct?
And we're out of time, but any questions?
I'd just like to say how impressed I am. First of all, I could get a better meeting than all of you up there. It's been a very amazing ride. Also, I think the emphasis on the social-emotional curriculum is perfect. It's long overdue. It's absolutely right. And I just want to thank all of you and also Joanne Keen, who's a big emphasis behind these changes and appreciate you.
And so, go ahead, Jen.
I apologize for my... A bit of my own jinx. For my edification, as well as maybe someone here, would you start at the beginning and explain, what is the mission?
Sorry, special delivery, I just like your home.
What is the mission of Refugio High School? Who are the students that are specifically targeted for enrollment? And how do those students advance?
Continuation school, we are a comprehensive high school at Sandy Inez. Continuation high school is designed really for students for credit recovery through large departments. So students that are behind the credits and can't really fit it in here, they have the opportunity to earn credits at a faster rate. They don't always do it, we know. But they have that opportunity to accelerate and then recover the credits. So for example, a student could complete three English classes in one semester. They could complete the curriculum and move on to the next one. So when a student reaches the point where mathematically they can't, they can't graduate from here, we need an alternative. And every district has one of these continuation schools.
Long ago, it was seen as like the bad kids went and really that kind of went away and it became credit recovery. So we had a kid, for example, came in last year about January, was way behind the credits. They wound up graduating at Thanksgiving this year. So graduated, what, six months early because got motivated, died everything done. So then that's kind of our hope is so those kids get excited. Some kids return to San Ynez High School at different points in time that they get caught up, and others graduate February.
And so districts serving high school students are required by law to have a continuing education school. And so Refugio needs that need. And John is correct, you know, when I first came here six years ago, it was a combination of credit deficiency and also students that had been in trouble, not necessarily credit deficient. And we have made a very decided point to say Refugio is for credit deficient students. And so that's made the difference, it's getting a whole between about fifteen and twenty, which is what it should be for a district of our size to really run effectively.
So then, since you bring up the subject of fully serving, those that were in trouble, where today do those students go?
So we've been making things work here on this campus. If there is a student, the only reason a student would leave San Ynez High was that there was an expellable offense for head code and there was a decision to approve that expulsion.
Thank you. My next question is that by my calculations, the PTR, people teacher ratio, is less than two point zero to one. So can you tell me what is the actual cost per student to the tax code?
Keep in mind, for science, if I had one period, so Jake, it is four periods with San Ynez, each of the teachers have the same thing. So if you combine it as a teacher.
So then I guess I should, I'll change it to a question, how many total FTEs does the, does the school have?
Really not, not even one, right?
Yeah, because we're talking four.
So four periods.
Yeah, either six- period day, eight- or seven- period day.
Point eight FTEs. Alright, but obviously changes the discussion. Scott, I'm assuming because they're associated with us, Refugio is a basically non-state aid?
We are basically a district. Correct, so we're funded as a district over Refugio and San Ynez, it's basically a district.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for being here. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to just say thank you for not calling in the school to give that advice. I just love that, I mean, that's the happiest moment of this evening, is that the credit recovery. Because I think it really makes a difference. My child graduated from high school at San Ynez thirteen years ago and that was always the message. So, thank you.
So some really great things are going to happen next year with this team. And a reminder as well that Stephanie is also hitting up our MPSS or Community Interior System to support for the whole district. Refugio is part of that. We'll get some great opportunities really to work with some things with Refugio that might possibly work in another setting as well. But things are looking good for next year, so thank you all, I'm very proud of where we're going, where we're going. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, Mary and Jennifer. Someone please say so.
Can I ask a question?
I just wanted to know, I'm just curious, how are these kids, are they eligible when they come out of this program to take the GED? I mean, are they at?
They don't need a GED if they graduate from here, it's the same as San Ynez.
Are the skills pretty comparable of getting them to their GEDs if they don't finish the program at the school?
Yeah, on a GED, many students in our entire district never take the GED. So, but in terms of skills, yeah, they're being taught math one-on-one, math two-on-one, they're reading, writing skills, gee, Scott, and science. The difference is in, you know, in a regular classroom, if they're taking chemistry, everyone's taking chemistry. Where here, Jake might have three or four different science things going on, each of them might have different levels. So it's a little more independent, you can't, you know, the one teacher. So, but they are, they have to be the same standards as the San Ynez High School students.
I'm not trying to be a downer.
No, no, no.
I'm not, I'm just a King Harris grandparent to observe. And the only thing I can see from this is being out there in the real world, in my sixties, I think in a way, this is my personal opinion, it's not an attack on you, I don't know anybody in this room. But I think you're doing a disservice to these kids because you're preparing to go into the outside world. And life is not birthday parties and what you get to the real world. And I just think that in a way, you're undercutting the purpose of school, which is to prepare them for going out.
We're doing that, but at the same time, some of these kids have different backgrounds, so they may not have a family that will celebrate their birthday. So we are academically meeting their needs, but also socially emotionally, these kids need our support. So we do anything to make them feel like we're a big family. Like if you come in every morning, I will be there to greet you because you're my kid during the day. And that's how I feel.
And I will have one little shout out, my student graduated last year, Diana Estrada, I don't know if Melanie would remember Diana or anyone else would. She graduated from Refugio last year and she's now in my Hancock English class and she's doing really well. And I have another student, Urike Hara, who's signed up for my class in the fall. So I think they're getting definitely what they need as far as the, definitely the academics, I got the curriculum from Tori when I came here. So, and I'm sure she was a pretty good teacher. And, you know, I really think that they do, but they need more social, emotional stuff to like help them throughout their day.
Well, some of those skills you obtain like in elementary school, it seems like, I mean, high school is long, it's, you know, much closer to adulthood.
So they're going, they're going to events here to run just a few field trips, this isn't a daily.
I'm just saying, it's a lot of resources for, I'm just curious what.
So I would love to actually talk to you about that.
That's okay, I'm done, I'm just saying, that was said, but it is, is, you know.
So there are a range of significant needs that those students have that need to be met if they're going to be successful. And you're looking at a staff that understands rigor and preparation for post-secondary. So they're pretty good, I'd be happy to talk to you about it again. Okay, right, thank you, thank you all again. Mary, Jen, hello. So happy to have you. You all have not been Mary Conway before with People Helping People, with Coalition. Every other year, we conduct the California Healthy Kids Survey with our students. And they are here to share that data with you. And so they have fifteen minutes to do that, plus question and answers when we're done. So if you had an opportunity to go through the PowerPoint, which is twenty-seven slides, along with more information they'll be presenting today. They've also added another couple of slides for your benefit about things that we can do in conjunction with your coalition to actually do some things with this data and select some thousand directions for our kids to help them be successful. So thank you both for being here.
Thank you very much. This is Chris. Yes. Great, well, it is our pleasure to be here. This is probably the fifth time in a period of ten years that we presented the Healthy Kids Survey data. So when we say that it takes a village to raise up a child, it's especially true in the sense of youth substance abuse prevention. It really takes all of us and no one person or one entity can do it alone. So we are here tonight to share and collaborate with the school and to engage all the sectors here in the community or in the audience to share the Healthy Kids Survey data, it's really the voice of our youth. So I'm gonna have Jennifer Caveria, who is our data and evaluation specialist. But Jennifer's our expert and she's worked tirelessly to look at all the data and compile what she's gonna share with you, which is just a glimpse, alright? Thank you.
And just to introduce myself, I just wanted to say that I've been at the San Ynez Valley Coalition for about five years now. Been working in public health for about sixteen years now. After graduating from UCLA from the Master in Public Health. I also have seven children, three of whom have graduated from the high school, one who's currently here, and three who are to come. So I'm certainly invested in our kind of school and in our community and that's what brings me here, part of what brings me here this evening. So just to let you know that, put that out there, that I'm a member of this community as much as anyone, even though I haven't lived here for forty years, as many have. But just an overview of the California Healthy Kids Survey for anyone who's not familiar, it's something that's given, a survey that's given to our high school students in ninth and eleventh grade. It's administered every other year here on the campus. It's also given to seventh graders and some fifth graders in our valley as well. And while it's administered on the campus, certainly the issues that arise from the data are community issues, can be community issues, which can be addressed as a community. It's not solely the responsibility of the school. We don't believe it's solely the responsibility of the school to resolve or come up with the solutions for some of the issues that arise. It is a federally recognized survey and it's administered statewide and the data's been found to be valid and reliable. Just to put that all out there, because I know sometimes there's questions about particular surveys that come up. The validity of the California Healthy Kids Survey is compromised if less than seventy percent respond. And we had about ninety percent of our ninth graders and eleventh graders take the survey this year, which is a really high percentage and is very usual for the high school, for our district. We usually have a very high percentage that report. So we really see this as a voice of our kids, we really see this data as the voice of our kids. And our intention here today is just to share what they said, what they reported, the behaviors and the thoughts that they had. And we recognize that we as the Coalition don't have a full scope of everything that goes into this data and why the kids are doing what they're doing, or saying what they're saying. We're just here to share what they said, how that compares with our county, and how that compares with the kids that are their same age, taking the same survey. So that we can look at those issues and really tackle them as a community in partnership with our school, district and administrator. So there are about a hundred and thirty questions on the survey and certainly we're not gonna cover all of them tonight. We're gonna cover a few of the key indicators that we look at and break them down into three categories. The first of which is youth substance use, the second is school environment, and the third is mental health. So beginning with substance use, we see here a snapshot, I have actually some slides behind you that you might want to take a look at. Here's a snapshot of the president of our ninth and eleventh graders who reported that they were using substances on a regular basis. Using in the past thirty days is considered regular use in the research, so that's what we'll be looking at today. We see for the first time, the alcohol is no longer, alcohol advantage is no longer the drug choice, which it has historically been up here in the valley as well as across the country. It's been bypassed by vaping and e-cigarettes, both in our eleventh graders and our ninth graders. This is truly unprecedented, because like I said, alcohol has historically been the drug choice for our kids, as well as kids all across the country. Looking at regular use trend lines for our eleventh graders, beginning in two thousand and eight and looking towards two thousand and eighteen, most recently. We can see that alcohol in red, that top line, has traditionally been the drug of choice, historically been the drug of choice. And the pink line down below it, you can see is, kind of mirrors that red line, which has been drinking. The green line is marijuana use, it has historically come in second. And then we have the dark blue, the purple, and the orange line down at the bottom, which is cigarettes, prescription drug use, and inhalants. And those have all decreased or remain about the same. What we see that began in two thousand and fourteen was that blue trend line that jumped up above the alcohol rates this past year.
That was the question we had asked, so I'll tell you how it is written.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we'll get there. So just to start with alcohol use, because it has traditionally been the drug of choice for our youth. We can see here on the left are the ninth graders and on the right are the eleventh graders. We can see that the blue bars are San Ynez students and the black lines are the county average. So those are the districts in the entire county, including Cartmanteria, Santa Barbara, San Ynez, Long Oak, and Santa Maria School Districts. So all of their data was combined and we can see where we stand in relation to the districts in the rest of our county. We see that in two thousand and eight, for current use of alcohol, or use in the past thirty days, forty-two percent of our eleventh graders were drinking on a regular basis back in two thousand and eight. And that's down to twenty-seven percent in two thousand and eighteen. I'm looking on the right side at the eleventh graders.
You have a laser pointer.
Okay. So, yeah, for each of the indicators that I'll share, where our district exceeds the county average, it does look like, when we looked into the data a little bit further, that our district also has the highest rate among the other districts in the county, with the exception of cigarette use. So regarding the districts.
Is the county percentages of students that are taking a test of the SARS?
The percentages that are, that were compared with are above seventy percent. I always look at the response rate before looking at the data, it's the first thing that I look at, see if the responses, response rate is valid and viable.
So they're very similar yet.
They're not similar in number, but they're similar in.
Number of people they're taking.
In the percentage that are taking them. Yes, they are, they may not be at ninety percent, but they'll be somewhere above seventy percent and up to ninety percent. So we turned out a binge drinking, having five or more drinks in a row, cancer progression, stuff, within a couple of hours. Which can lead to increased risk of health problems such as injuries, car crashes, alcohol poisoning, violent behavior, chronic procedures such as blood pressure, liver disease, memory and learning problems, and of course, alcohol dependence. For those of you who grew up in the valley, you probably have recognized that the fatalities among our youth have, from drinking and driving, have certainly decreased. And the data certainly supports that less of our kids, fewer of our kids are drinking. We see that in two thousand, drinking and driving, excuse me, forty-one percent in two thousand and eight, down to nineteen percent in two thousand and eighteen. But certainly we are still above the county average for drinking and driving. So regarding marijuana use, we were unsure about how our kids' use of marijuana would change this year with the legalization of recreational marijuana use. Even though the new law really only applied to people that were twenty-one years and older, we wondered how that would play out with our youth. And we can see that marijuana in our valley has declined since two thousand and eight overall, going from twenty-nine percent to twenty-three percent. But it has increased among our eleventh graders between, from two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen. And it does look like we're above the county average in terms of eleventh grade use. So in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen.
Could that possibly be? How many stores do we have in one county itself? You know, there's one.
One or more.
Well, I mean, like I said, I'm taking in the vaping type of things, the tobacco store.
Sure.
And there's something in Solvang.
They have three stores.
Okay, that's right, there's three.
Hilton's, they have them, but Solvang has three.
Okay.
You know, and that's a good question, I'm not sure how that compares to the other school districts where we are comparing to. I know that Santa Barbara has a number of dispensaries and things, but I'm not sure that about the number. And the number per population, so that could be something to definitely look into. So moving on to cigarette use, in two thousand and fourteen and sixteen, when we shared this presentation, we were very concerned that our eleventh graders were using at nearly double and triple the rate of our eleventh graders in the county as a whole. Were pleased to see that their regular cigarette use has certainly declined. However, unfortunately, as we mentioned before, the vaping and the e-cigarette use has dramatically increased among our youth. We see here that our eleventh graders are reporting, nearly double the rate of eleventh graders in Santa Barbara County as a whole. We've seen that the vaping devices are easily concealable, even in the classroom, many of them look like small flash drives, which are hard to detect. But we're very concerned, as is the school board and the school administrators, about this rising trend in the high level of nicotine that's being delivered in the devices. We're glad to have partnered with the school administrators, most recently, Mary provided the vaping presentation for parents, as well as for the community and for the teachers. And we partnered together on a town hall also to start addressing these trends. Now we'll move on to sharing some of the risk and protective factors that have been found to influence substance use among our kids. There are a number of things that influence obviously a student's decision to use or reuse substances. Certainly their home and their family and their friends are all gonna, you know, make an impact on and play a role in that decision. But the Healthy Kids Survey asks more about the school environment and the factors that could end up playing a role. So next we'll look at a few of those school environment risks and protective factors. So carrying adults in school is one of those protective factors. Research has shown that students do better when they have a teacher or some other adult at school who really cares about them. And in this case, we see that about fifty-nine percent of our eleventh graders are reporting that there is a teacher or some other adult at school who really cares about them. Feeling safe at school is also a protective factor and we see that a little more than half of our eleventh graders reported feeling safe or very safe at school. Awareness of weapons on campus is certainly a risk factor, may tie into feelings of safety on campus. We see that nineteen percent of our eleventh graders reported seeing someone carrying a knife or other weapon on school property in the past twelve months. We also look back in comparison to the county rates and definitely see a need to address that issue. Drug distribution on campus is a risk factor. We see that about thirty-three percent of our eleventh graders reported being offered, sold, or given an illegal drug on school property in the past twelve months. And we know that this percentage has been rising since about two thousand and fourteen and is substantially higher than what eleventh graders in Santa Barbara County have. So we've all heard a great deal about bullying and harassment and the rising trends there. And you know, we can understand how students experiencing harassment and bullying may be at a higher risk factor, or at higher risk for developing substance use habit in the future. may be at a higher risk factor, or at higher risk for developing substance use habits in the future. And so just to clarify, the Healthy Kids Survey doesn't ask specific or general questions about having been bullied. The questions are very specific. They're asking specific questions about harassment. So we'll look at those and how those have changed over time. So here we see the specific question. We see that twenty-one percent of our 11th grade students reported being pushed, shoved, or hit on school property in the past twelve months. This is substantially higher than the rate of 11th graders in Santa Barbara County as a whole. So we'll look at one other harassment question. Here we see that forty-four percent of our 11th graders reported having been rumors or lies spread about them on school property in the past twelve months. This has remained about the same over time since 2008 with the, you know, under fluctuations and while the county rates have then gradually decreased. If you're like me, you might be wondering why, or are they being harassed and they did, they're asked about on the Healthy Kids Survey. It looks like the greatest reason that our 11th graders reported being bullied or harassed on school property in the past twelve months had to do with race or ethnicity. Very concerning here on this slide is that we see our kids are reporting harassment for the fact, hate, and reasons that are listed, and around that goal, or even triple the rate of the 11th graders in Santa Barbara County as a whole. I wanted to take a quick peek at cyberbullying. This is different from the other things that are on school property, because it's not happening necessarily on school property, but probably affects the school environment. Here we see that about thirty-five percent of our 11th graders reported having other students spreading rite of life. Reported having other students spread mean rumors or lies about them on the internet in the past twelve months. This has been on the rise since 2014, you can see there, and it's above the county average. Turning now to just a couple indicators of our mental health, I'll share about these last couple of risk factors for our kids, and then invite Mary to share some recommendations that we have compiled. First of all, we see here about depression, that about one in three of our 11th graders reported feeling sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in the past twelve months. And that's the clinical definition for depression, so that's why I just put it on the side. So we're not just asking the kids, the kids are not just asked, are you depressed? There's a specific question that they're not. And our 11th graders are actually reporting depression at the lowest rate in the county among all of the school districts. We're also glad to see that those who report having seriously considered suicide is lower than the county average. But we still see that somewhere around maybe about ninety to one hundred of our students, if you put that in numbers, have seriously considered suicide in the past year. And certainly we want to keep a close eye on this data to keep our kids safe and healthy. And now I'll invite Mary back up to share some recommendations that we've compiled to address this data that we have just shared. And we hope to really partner with you all, with the community, to look for the reason for these trends. Because certainly we don't presume to know all of the reasons. We're just here to share what the report has said, what the kids have said. And so we hope to look for some solutions as a community that we can carry out.
There is some good news to all this. We always have to think positive in our efforts. And so we have, like Jennifer mentioned, had the town hall here at school, as well as working with the teachers and their training and families. And then through the community efforts we've made, that we've gotten some suggestions. And so I'm going to share those with you. And we're doing one of them, whoops, sorry, of the wrong finger here.
Multitasking.
Yes, I can't do that as much these days. But to examine what the business is telling us, it's not the only source that we have for understanding what our children are experiencing and what the outcomes are. But certainly the chicks' trends help us. And so we do plan to meet, we've discussed this with Mr. Corey, and we'll be meeting with the administration so that we can really look a lot deeper into these issues that are of concern, not only to the school but to our full community. And then you can see on the board there, I won't read through them all in case of time, but there's been some good ideas about having good consistent policies. And then the education piece, it's not the only way to make change, it's a part of it, and we certainly can't ignore it. So it was suggested by teachers that we have more assemblies, increase, one of those is to increase posters, prevention posters on campus. And to consider some programs, like the Student Assistant Program. Certainly the one that you discussed earlier, Scott, is a very valuable program that would fit into this. Reconnecting youth and incorporating the Forty Developmental Asset Model is really one that can help our kids build those resiliency skills. Now, going further, we've got recommendations to increase monitoring, which makes a lot of sense. The hiring of our resource officer, there's, most of these recommendations in regards to monitoring may have a monetary value to that, and so we're definitely looking in to ways. And one of them is our coalition, is working with the other coalitions in the county to establish the need for some marijuana tax dollars for prevention. So we're looking at all different things and working with the spirit to do that. I thought this was interesting to incentivize reporting and destigmatize, ratting out, because it's so hard to address the problem if no one comes forth and talks about it. And so our awareness as community and as school staff and board members, the awareness is a big part of it, and then trying to work with our young people that are experiencing these things to be able to tell a trusted adult. So you can see some other things there. But encouraging more parent involvement, that came from the teachers. You often think that in high school, parents need to back out. And by utilizing our parents and being more connected and partnering with them on advocating for our youth, it's a powerful thing. So I was pleased to see they said that. So I think what we'll do is go ahead and open it up to questions. We just gave you a really quick glimpse, and we're happy to answer any questions to the best of our abilities.
So I have two questions. One of them, what is included in, what are they using, what type of inhalants are they using these days?
Things from home, yeah, things from their home, over the counter products that are still not behind the counter because they've been discovered. Whipped cream is one of the most common ones, but inhaling, or using inhalants is deadly. And unfortunately, we're very low on the radar, but we don't want to discount it, so thank you for asking.
And my other question is, is remind me again of the time of the year that we actually do the survey.
So the survey is done in the fall. Last year, I think it was not until December, and this year, I believe it was November. So when you look at the sixth grade data, or the ninth grade data, they're just coming into high schools. So that, if you're looking at twelve month data there, it's reflective of their gender, height, experience. And then most of it, it's been just for a couple months.
Well, you answered my question, thank you.
I have several questions too, no surprise. Mary and Jennifer, in the short time that I've been on the board, but two years before that, I attended board meetings. In my humble opinion, this is the most impactful report that's ever been presented to this board. There is so much in this report, this is just one, I spent a lot of time reviewing it, I cannot tell you how appreciative I am. When we have this beautiful strategic plan that we spent time on, which is supposed to map out our future, this is what should map out our future. This is just wonderful, the reason I say it like that is because it matters not what our mission is, it matters not how many C I A championships we have, it matters not how many kids are getting great grades. This will destroy everything that our school district is working so hard for. This needs to be job on the morning. I've got some specific questions. Substance use trends, I don't see any data for illegal drug usage, such as cocaine, fentanyl, caffeine, antibiotics, steroids, heroin, which by the way is dirt cheap these days. Can you folks hear me? I'll talk as loudly as I can if I can. Crystal, that LSD, so my question is, were there any questions asked in the survey that would specifically highlight that?
Absolutely, yeah. The survey goes into all of the drugs, and for the purpose of our report here, we're focusing on the top drugs that the young people are using. But the full report really gives you a better picture of what's out there for the young people, and it's horrendous. And it's changing all the time. But for our purpose here, we focused on these key indicators of top use. But all of it matters.
The percentages of use were very low, very low, lower than the inhalate use, which was around one or two percent. The percentage of use is low, certainly those are, you know, highly addictive drugs. But certainly we also are looking at alcohol.
At age myself here, when I was in grade school, see how many of you had a similar experience? We live for when the teachers would pass out the mini graff.
We all have that sense of experimentation.
I don't think that any of us should look at the performance of our high school in comparison with the county average, even when we were below the county average with any sense of pride, because the numbers still are horrible, they're absolutely horrible. If you go to the graph on carrying adults in school, this is really sad commentary on so many levels. Every teacher, not just in our school district, but every teacher should look at this with great pain, because it says that fifty-nine percent of our students, which is just the county average, feels that there is a teacher who really cares about them. Goodness gracious, folks, that means that there is thirty-one percent of the students, or forty-one percent, forty-one percent of the students that feel there's no teacher that cares. That's a crisis.
The women who began sharing the data from West Ed also pointed out that certainly you're going to see the kids who are using in that forty-one percent. The kids that are engaging and are receiving kickers in that forty-one percent. And so even though that doesn't say, that doesn't mean necessarily that the teachers are not caring about them, but they don't see the teachers as caring about them.
Maybe the teachers need to take a more proactive role and actually individually schedule time to go up to the students, say, I don't find there a good time, and you can come in on the lunch hour, just the two of us, so I can talk with you and see how you're doing, rather than waiting for the student to make the first step.
I think it would be interesting to find out how students perceive as someone caring about them too. So maybe their perception of a caring teacher isn't necessarily the balloons or the party things, but it might mean something deeper to them. So that'd be an interesting thing to find out, a focus group would be.
I'm now looking at the perception of school safety, which basically says that one-fourth of our 9th graders, our youngest children, and approximately half our seniors or undergraduates do not feel safe. I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. If you had a daughter that said, Mom, I've been going, I'm going to go to a sleepover tonight, but I don't feel safe, would you let her go? With numbers like this, how can a caring parent drop their child in the morning? If they exist in this forty percent that don't feel safe or is.
Actually, for that question, I just want to clarify that there is a percentage of students that say, I don't feel safe or unsafe. So I'm going to make, there's a percentage of them that say, I don't feel, I don't feel safe or unsafe. And then there's, I don't feel safe. There's a middle ground. So they're not necessarily saying that they feel unsafe, but yes, you're right.
One down, then another chart, or that's called that, so we know exactly how many percent.
Right, we weren't just trying, yes, we can provide.
And so I think that's important too in all these questions, because to say that, you know, forty percent of our kids don't have a caring adult, if they're, the last thing I'll let them think, I think it would be very, very dangerous. And so maybe there's a conversation about how we purposely engage in that, maybe a little differently than say, I would respect that as a career, but if somebody listens to me, that's not what I do in the profession.
Well, obviously the number of persons who are one hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Even if you were to tell me the ten percent of kids don't feel safe, if you're John Bay, you make almost the same commentary.
I just want to be fair to those that are working there.
I would love to know on the data gathering for weapons, what the methodology was used, because if it only asked, do you recall seeing anybody with a weapon in the past twelve months? Or what if it was a sheriff's deputy that was wanting to do things? And what qualifies as being a weapon? You know, if I'm an ROTC student and I've got my fiberglass rifle doing a drill routine, because once again, and these are significant numbers, and if this numbers are asked to appear, then my question to administration would be, if we've had this many 9th graders and 11th graders that report having seen a weapon, do we have an equal number of reports where students come into administration to report what they just saw?
That would not be the case, we're not doing that one for.
And we get back to the ratting out issue.
I mean, it's sort of a rhetorical question, and I knew that was going to be the answer, and so then we need to go to the next step and make sure these students know that if we have, if we as a school district have zero tolerance in allowing bad behavior, then the students should have zero tolerance and not be willing to rat out bad behavior with their peers. That's a steep hill to climb to get it, but something.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the question to the students clarifies what a weapon is, and it says carrying a gun, knife, or other weapon, which could be something that they could hurt someone with, like a scissor nail plow or scissors or something like that. But it specifies gun and knife.
Gun and knife or other weapon.
Or other, yeah.
I know in the past, we've seen the entire questions, Dr. Kiefer, where you give a better idea, because it's hard to put all this data into something in a short report. It's quite extensive, if it is available.
Unless it's available to anybody.
Because if you read the questions and you begin to realize that some of the questions are very, very specific, and it's difficult to take this result and realize if you don't have that background, there are a lot of questions that were asked.
Right, I mentioned there's about a hundred and thirty questions. So this is definitely a small subset of the data. It's also important key indicators that not only are we looking at, but communities across the country are looking at. So we didn't just pull these specific indicators because we wanted to. It's also a common, you need to look at these indicators.
But when you're studying, you haven't looked at that, and you're just studying this, it makes it a little bit more difficult to interpret, to interpret the whole thing.
I just want to reiterate that we're talking about a caring adult, which could be Miss Swannas, Cypher. It could be Mrs. Westmore. So it could be anybody on the campus. So I think, you know, as I've said many times, this is a team sport, this takes everyone. So we want to get parents more involved, yes we do. I do think that there's a perception sometimes when your child gets in high school, it's sort of like, you know, we gotta start doing the letting go, which I think is healthy. But I think it gets back to that balance. If they feel like the only person they can talk to is Mrs. Swannas, well, God love them, just do it. You know, I think that's. You know, I think that's, that's a good balance.
When I was a child, I was bullied for years, starting with kindergarten. Very sensitive to the bullying data that you've got. And the thing I want to remind everybody is that Eric Hares and Dylan Prue, who were the two perpetrators for calling my high school massacre. They both said many times over, it was all because of the bullying. It was all because of the bullying that those children were killed.
That's why we do include this as an environment, because it is very powerful and certainly it appears with the learning environment.
Finally, I made a statement about depression, which could be obvious, but a lot of people, especially students, may have the misunderstanding of what depression is. Students will say they're depressed if they got a bad grade on their final exam, and they can be depressed for two weeks. Students may say that they're depressed because the captain of the cheerleader squad turned them down on a date. And they can hold that depression for two weeks. Those are all things that you get over. But the question talks about feeling hopeless. And that's the huge red flag. Because most, most of these students that have committed mass murder, if you read their social media postings, they at one time or another contemplated suicide. If you're gonna contemplate suicide, then you don't care who you're gonna take down with you. And so anybody that truly has contemplated suicide, this should be a huge red flag to everybody, that we don't need to just look out for his self. Preservation, that those of everybody. No, two more things, I'm sorry. This is, this is more importantly than else we're gonna talk about tonight. I think the common thread for all of this data is the impact of every one of these issues that a school resource officer could have. This campus needs to have one. We no longer have it for purely one reason, because of budgetary problems. I'm sensitive to that. But I also realize that there are other districts in our county that are under a lot tighter budgetary constraints than we are, who have school resource officers. And I'll ask each one of you on the table rhetorically, if we can talk about it, do we ever wanna find ourselves in a position of regret? Or why didn't we somehow take down the effort, finally, for a school resource officer, having that conversation with part of a few of them? And the last request I would make is, I would love to see some data comparing eighth graders with ninth graders. The purpose of that would be the influence of upper class and honoring young ninth graders. Many of us in here recall the days when we were all in, in secondary education, and there was junior highs, where the ninth graders went to junior high. And I would love to know if the eighth graders had similar data to the ninth graders, or if there's an instant increase in incidence of all of this, of these social pills, once they get exposed to older children.
There certainly is an increase, I can just give, because we do collect the data among the junior high schools as well. But the, the survey is taken in seventh grade, so it's a comparison of seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade, which we didn't share today, because we're terrified. But certainly it's expected that those risky behaviors are gonna increase as they get older, regardless of what situation they come into.
But is it a straight line, or does the slope of the graph significantly increase once they get into the high school environment?
I see what you're saying, so from seventh to ninth, compared with ninth to eleven?
I'd like to compare seven to eight, with eight to nine.
So perhaps some of these things could be considered in the future meeting.
Yeah, we certainly have a lot of work to do, no question, but the next one, we're gonna schedule it for fall.
Definitely.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Okay, thank you all for the discussion. Now the microphone is fully warmed up, we're going to call it the San Luis Valley Community Aquatic Foundation. To talk about the aquatic swimming complex, thanks to those of you that are here for that purpose.
Well, thank you for having me, hopefully there's gonna be a lot more fun to talk about, and the great folks from the Youth Coalition. The data isn't always fun, but it's data, and so I'd like, thanks for that. I don't wanna thank, thank you all for the opportunity to present today. Let me point out some of the, if I can have all the board members for the foundation stand up. Some of them, not everybody, have been hanging around, but I wanna thank you all very much for years of service in this endeavor. Let me also point out Megan Deaton-Hoffman from the county supervisor's office, who's helping us on all this right here, and a lot of other supporters here as well. So let me go to the next slide here, if I can figure this out. So back in the fifties, I'm gonna tell you where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going, okay? So that's what we're gonna do today. Back in the fifties, this is from the San Luis Valley News, there was an effort to raise money for a pool, for a community pool, and that failed. In the mid-sixties, the San Luis Valley Elks stepped up and raised money for a community pool. And the picture you see right there, if I don't align anybody with my laser pointer, was the complex as it was supposed to be. What actually got built was what you actually, you, you see out there in the, next to Ruffio Road now is a smaller pool, which is meant to be a recreational pool and a kiddie pool. The pool as we have it now was never meant to be the competitive pool for the high school. That was gonna be this pool that was big enough for true swim meets and true water polo meets and true diving. Never got built for reasons that I don't know. So the current pool is, we have, we can't have regulation swim meets, we can't have regulation water polo meets. And because of that, actually, over time, we've had students from this school transfer to Santa Maria or Santa Barbara, just because their kids needed aquatics facilities that would get them onto scholarships in college. Kim Craig left this community, she wound up being an Olympian. Mike Hendrick's family and John Conley's family are more examples, just in my time here, who moved out of the district just because of our poor aquatics facilities. Now, the Elks built this as a community facility, it never really got to be one, except during the summertime, and after high school practice, uh, team practice in the afternoon. So for example, a couple of years ago, just in four weeks of summertime, we had two thousand six hundred and fifty people use the, the pool here in the High School Browns, under the YMCA program. But that was fifty-five years ago, so as I led the school board a few years ago, I realized that you all would be facing a very stark choice. And that is, the pool is failing, it's past its design age, and at some point it will fail. And will this high school district ever again be able to raise eight million dollars, ten million dollars, fifteen million dollars to build a new pool? I think probably not, especially when you're faced with decisions where you wind up having to lay out a set. That's extremely painful. So with that stark choice coming up, as the pool gets older, it costs more and more and more for the school district to maintain the pool. Becoming increasingly expensive, and even a health hazard, which the districts try to mitigate by putting a new coating on the, on the pool deck. But in every difficult situation, there is opportunity, and we're trying to take advantage of that opportunity. In this valley, we have a long, long history of the community getting together and making things happen. The community built the YMCA, not the National Y Program. The community built the festival theater in Salben, it wasn't some other outfit. The community built our hospital, it wasn't some other big corporation that did that. So that's our community, but even here for our school, so many things, I mean, the idea is, let's use taxpayer money in the classroom. And then let's let the community figure out how to raise money for everything else. So the high school football field, the track, the tennis courts, the baseball field, those are all primarily funded by the community and not by taxpayer dollars. So let's keep doing that, let's get the community to build this pool, because the school district's certainly never gonna be able to afford it, I think. So then a number of serendipitous things happened back as we were pondering this. One is Gary Hall moved to the community. Olympian, knows all about pools, his family's been running pools forever, and he told us about an opportunity to buy a pool, which was installed in Omaha for the 2016 Olympic trials for swimming. And you actually see it right here, the warm-up pool was a fifty-meter, regular-sized, Olympic-sized pool, and a few additional lanes right here. Well, if you break that up, that's essentially the plan for what the community pool was supposed to have been back in the sixties. So now here, this is, and we're able to get it at a significant discount. So now we have a lot of things coming together, which are gonna allow us to build a true aquatics complex that is gonna be much better for our high school students and much better for the community as well. But we wanted to do our due diligence, so some of us went up to Kings Canyon School District and saw their brand-new pool that they had installed. It was a Martha pool, like the one that we were considering buying, which is, this is actually my photo right here, of the, of the Kings Canyon pool. They had just finished it, I was able to talk to administrators, coaches, maintenance personnel about how that was going, and they were ecstatic about it. They were also able to give us their studies, they had done studies on how much would maintenance be, how much would operational costs be? They were fresh, they were done, there's no reason for us to pay for all those, so we were able to get ahold of those copies and provide them to the school district. And really, the bottom line is, we're paying so much for maintenance of our current pool, probably for decades to come, even though we're gonna wind up with larger pools, we're gonna wind up with lower maintenance costs. The new pool that we're buying has a fourteen-year guarantee. If, the, the current pool obviously has no guarantee at all, and if we built just a regular concrete pool, it would be a one-year guarantee. So we moved forward, we purchased the pool with support from the community. We established an MOU with the school district, a very general MOU that say, hey, what, you know, if, if the foundation will build this for the school district, the school district will share it with the community. And oh, by the way, that's exactly one of the things in the previous strategic plan, was to continue to do that going forward. So we wanted to make sure that the community paid for these pools, not this school district. So I'd like everybody to repeat after me. No measured penny dollars are being spent on this pool. The people voted for a bond here in the valley to be spent in the classroom, or actually do it, improve our basic classroom facilities, and that's where those dollars are going. We will not spend property taxes from the valley on this pool, we're just not gonna do it. So it's taken a lot of partners to do this, so we do two big things. We've been raising funds like crazy over the last few years, and we've been working with partners to create whatever the kind of programming this should be moving forward. So everybody on the left-hand side has given some amount of money to our effort. Everybody on the right-hand side, to one degree or another, has participated with us in figuring out what kind of program we wanna have for our pools. So here's where we are right now. We just, as you know, everything's about the environment here in Santa Barbara County, as it should be. So we had to complete this study under the California Environmental Quality Act, paid for by the foundation. That is now done, just as late as last week, so that's a huge check mark right there as we move forward. We continue to refine our design and function, I'll show you that in just a minute, working with architects and engineers to do that. And just, I think Jake, last night, we started, kicked off community meetings to gather public input for what they wanted this pool to be. What are the physical aspects of it, what are the, what's kind of programming do they wanna see? And we're, we're holding those meetings several different places around the valley over the next few weeks. Here's where we are with fundraising, and my apologies, this is a very, very busy slide, but here's the corvid. We have another ten million dollars that we need to raise. A big chunk of that is, we're working with the county and our local cities to obtain money under the recent Prop sixty-eight parks bond that was passed by taxpayers in 2016. Our valley has always been a very, very, very small recipient of bond money from the state, and it's our time to step up now and get our fair share of what the state spends on parks. The two cities also get some money from the Prop sixty-eight, we're hoping that they will contribute those, those as well. And then we have a number of very, very big funders who are just waiting to see that this is really gonna happen, and step in at the last minute and finish this off. And I could talk for hours about this, but I won't do that tonight. So one really neat thing about the Prop sixty-eight process is, we had to do a whole lot of analysis to show the state, do we really deserve this money? I mean, because if you're in Sacramento, the San Luis Valley, you see on TV, it's just a whole bunch of rich kids and a bunch of rich old people, they don't need money for a pool, right? Well, you know, we all know that's true, and if you look at our, at all the data for the school district, we know that's true. But here's the numbers. Here are the demographics that we really have in the valley that we need to serve. In the center, we're showing, how many hours are we really able to provide swimming capability, the ability to swim to our kids, to our seniors, to our veterans? And compared to every place else in the county, it's minimal. And where are the pools on the right-hand side in the county? Be they be municipal pools or high school pools? And again, we are by far the most underserved in terms of access to aquatics facilities. So here's a, the working notion of what we have right now. The school district gave us a footprint in which we have to operate, and we have to put in two pools in there. And that's where the magic is, the magic is in having two pools, you know, absolutely, the, our high school student athletes get first party with them in pools, period. That's always gonna be true. But usually they don't use two pools at once. If we have high school water polo practice going on with Jake Alkaski, by the way, perennial league champions. And he's also graduated students that have gone on to play D1 water polo, even though they had to play with their legs stuck under them here in San Luis. And he wins league champions when we can't even host the championships at our own pool, we have to travel to Arroyo Grande to host a league game, a league championship game. But with two pools, that's where the magic happens. If water polo practice is going on in the big pool, the little pool can be used for the community. If PE, high school PE is going on in the small pool, then the big pool is available to the community. So there's no reason for us to shut the whole thing down just for the community or just for the high school, unless there's something big going on, like a tournament, or a weekend tournament with the, with the community. Other good things, you can have two different temperatures, professional swimmers, and for team sports, you don't like to have warm water, you like to have cooler water. So there's no need to heat up that big pool as much as a small pool. But if you have a three-year-old, you're trying to teach how to swim, you want warm water. If you're a senior citizen with gray hair and you're doing aqua aerobics, you want warm water. So to have those two different capabilities, that's part of the magic in all this. The number one comment we got from the community was, well, where are we gonna park? You know, park, where do we park? So we've worked real hard for the school district on that. And working with the county, thanks, thanks again to Megan and the folks at the county, we found out that we're, we're gonna be able to establish line parking along Ruffio Road that's already in the county rider work, not school district private. That will include a sidewalk and some more things I should have known. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now, we still have a lot of work to do, and we're gonna do that with input from the community on how this is gonna work. So here's the two different pools I talked about before. Both of them, we wanna have as much flexibility and capability as possible to use. Both of them, AKA compliant, both of them with some combination of ramps or stairs to get in there, so that we make this as fully functional as possible. Because remember, the last pool lasted at least fifty-five years, the next one, we have to make sure that we do it right, because it's our only shot for the next half century. We're gonna live with these next pools for fifty years, let's do it the right way. And this is kind of the breaking development. So here's where we talked about, so let me orient you, this is Highway two forty-six, here's Ruffio Road, here's where one of the new pools is gonna be, this is the entrance to the parking lot. So here's where we would have the line parking spaces along Ruffio Road. There's also room for a bike path right here, and as you know, biking is, is, can be pretty difficult with the traffic that we have. This effectively, doesn't really narrow it, but it makes drivers think that we've narrowed Ruffio Road and slowed down that crazy traffic. Breaking news, the San Luis Valley Bike Plan just came out in draft, and they do plan to extend the current bike path where it ends at the west parking lot, all the way to the corner. to the corner of Ruffio right here. So if this all works out right, we're going to be able to connect this bike path with this new bike path right here and hopefully use somebody else's money to do it. So that's the plan. All right, at the end of the day, though, it's not about just a pool, it's about what are we going to do with it? You know, how can we make this a major teaching opportunity for our students? How do we give them access to real facilities to further develop them and enrich our students' lives? How do we give more people in the community access to aquatics facilities? If you can't afford a membership of the Y? How do we make sure that every third grader in the valley learns how to swim? How do we make sure that every senior has the ability to go to Dirk Chiep aqua aerobics classes? And how do we make this the healthiest community in America? By, the pool itself doesn't do it, but it can certainly be a lot of leverage and provide a fire to make that happen. So that's it, and I open myself up to questions.
You briefed us so well. We have some requires.
Okay, so you got your checkbooks for accepting donations?
How do we start a sidewalk on Ruffio as well?
Yes.
And put that in there?
And then a sidewalk, and then parking, and then the bike path, and then the cars. And the sidewalk would be in the county right-of-way, not take away from the school district property. It's okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just thinking about getting students or anyone from one end of the valley to the other, because not everybody has opportunities or resources to do that, so they can use the pool because we're kind of spread out. So are any thoughts on that at this point?
Right there. Turn.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to sound out here, but you know, the idea is this is going to be the high school pool, the community pool, this is going to be the municipal pool for the city to build, which is the first way. This is going to be the municipal pool for the city to solve. So I know that those repremation departments, they're going to be thinking real hard about if they're physically separated, how are they going to, you know, what kind of bus service or what kind of extended bike, how capable they're going to be able to do that. I mean, for them, this is the best deal in the world. And they may have to pony up a little bit of money for shuttle buses or something.
Yeah.
But what an amazing opportunity.
Yeah, they already have a couple, so it's a start.
Dr. Baker?
Bruce, that is a great suggestion. So it sounds like to me that the deal maker or breaker is the Prop 68 money, because that accounts for $1.79 million of the total. So if you can, give us a little idea as far as what odds we're up against on having those monies actually come.
Yeah, so Prop 68 is not made or made. If we don't get Prop 68 money, we're just back to the grind of raising money 50,000, 100,000, half a million at a time. So it might take us a little bit longer, but we're going to get, Prop 68 is actually, there's different portions over time, so if we don't get it the first time, we have the opportunity to go for it the second time or the third time. So for example, the city of Ruffio is trying for a previous problem, remember the number, to get money to improve one of their parks. So they didn't get it the first time, they didn't get it the second time, and they didn't get it the third time. So it's not once you're done, win or lose, it's just part of the process.
Bruce, or possibly Scott, can you, you know I'm more exposed about this, but for everybody else's benefit, can you give some idea what the annual expenditures that the district right now is outlaying for the current pool?
No, without research, we can't certainly get it.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, it's significant only because it's in dilapidated state.
Yes, correct.
And so when everybody's trying to decide about the feasibility of going forward, that needs to be factored into the equation.
Efficiency of this complex, but actually far as we currently experience.
And I might add to that, it's so bad now, that for example, a couple of years ago in the summertime, the pool was closed half the time because of mechanical failures, and it's only going to get worse.
And then another fine point, you know I spoke about this, but for everybody else's justification, even though the pool would be considered a joint school slash community pool, the community would still be paying for their usage of it, and so to whatever amount, there would be some positive cash flow generated by pools, which would offset a lot of the ongoing expenses.
That's right. So if you kind of look at the small use we're doing now and expand it during the YNT of running in the summertime, everybody pays as they walk in to use the pool. And our different programs we have are all going to have some sort of a fee associated with it, to pay for the Y carers, to pay for the instructors, all that sort of thing. And hopefully, I can't guarantee this, but we'll be able to generate enough money to share some of the refunds with the high school. It'd never be a huge amount, I mean, we would price it at a pretty much breakeven point because that's, that's what we're trying to do. And kind of an extra thing, we've actually found foundations out there, like Woodcliffs, big, big foundations, they don't want to spend a whole lot of money on capital expenditures, but they told us, you know what, we would love to fund some of your programming. And when they hear about our third-grade learn-to-swim program, we need other people to pay for that. When we talk about maybe a free swim program, you know, for two hours a week or something like that in the summertime, so that literally anybody in the valley can swim, they can't afford to pay $3, there's people out there with money in their hand, ready to give to us when we get to that point.
My thing, Bruce, and again, I ask these two questions, not because they're my questions, but people have asked me, and so realize that we're being videoed tonight, hopefully somebody will go online and hear your answers. The two questions are, right here, is number one, we don't need a pool because we've got the Y right across the street, and it's not busy enough as it is. That's the first question I've been approached with. The second one is, Dr. Baker, there is an earthquake fault that goes right underneath where that pool's been. How appropriate, we think. So for the purpose of people or not, you're going to address that.
Okay, yeah, let me address the second one first because that's the easiest. The thing is, with this Mertha pool that we're constructing, it's stainless steel panels, it's not concrete. So concrete, an earthquake cracks and becomes irreparably damaged, so that you have to redo the whole thing. With steel panels, they might warp, or they might even separate, but that's extremely easily fixed, whether the damage is from an earthquake or a tractor trailer crashing into the pool, or some senior crane, or they dropped a crane into the pool or something like that. You know, this kind of pool is going to be way easier to fix than a senior school. As to the first question, to use the YNT, you have to be a member, and membership of the Y is not cheap. It's a nice pool, but it's also an indoor pool, it's also a shallow pool. So for example, if you want your kids to play or be in club swim or club water polo outside the school district, those capabilities are really not in the Y. I mean, they have them, but you can't even use, they don't even have starting blocks in the Y pool because of the depth of the pool. It's also a pool for everybody, so they tend to keep it pretty warm, so that if you're a master swimmer, for example, it's too warm for you. I mean, they do it, but that's why the numbers are relatively small. And as we design programs, we don't want to displace or compete with the Y, we want to be complementary with the Y's programs. And that's why we do them as a program department, not as competition.
Thank you so much. You're real important, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone of y'all for your services, it's not easy. This has been a really tough, tough year to be on the school board, so I salute every one of you for doing that. And my hands off to y'all.
Moving on, we go to number six, probably a comment. Friendly reminder that we honor the dream, and there are other people who might. Thank you. This is my discussion. Discussion. Hi, Jamie Philbin.
I probably don't have a mind for you, I'm very proud of you. Well, I'm really debating whether or not to come today, because what I want to speak about has just been an emotionally draining experience for my family, but I'm going to Just prior to the last board meeting, our son Peyton Philippine, along with other students, were, and I even hate to use this word, and I even hate to say labeled, but were sort of labeled as white supremacists. They were reprimanded for something that they didn't do or say or really understand. Faculty at this school jumped to erroneous conclusions about the students. Many received written apologies, our son did not. These students were innocent, having done absolutely nothing wrong, and these are good, solid, well-intentioned and intelligent students. There you are, some of your best and brightest students, and all of them, I've already indeed are leaders in this school and community with bright futures ahead of them, and they support their ideals as expressed in our constitution, and yet they were persecuted for it. If we had jumped to conclusions about the legality of the actions taken by the faculty, we would have engaged one of the several high-powered attorneys who reached out to us, but instead, we chose to write our letter before you. And I'm going to say that again, many reached out to us and offered their services pro bono. I won't say who they are, but trust me when I say they are top-shelf attorneys. This is precisely what your faculty administration should have done when they thought there was something going on with these students. Inquire, ask questions rather than label and defame them. The standards for the faculty seem to be quite different from the ones for the students. In this case, our kids were presumed to be guilty. If we were to presume your faculty was guilty, we would be embroiled in a very nasty lawsuit as I speak. Peyton is our fourth son to go through this high school, and this is from my heart. In all honesty, it has been a wonderful experience. We have been in this school since 2006. My boys have all received an excellent education, they have excelled in sports and have gone on to university very well-prepared. Peyton is set to pursue Architectural Engineering degree at Cal Poly in the fall. That is not an easy task, but it's the excellent education he received here that has in part helped him reach that goal. Sadly, and this is where I get emotional, these past five or six weeks have just been a miserable experience for our family, emotionally draining experience, and quite frankly, it was just unnecessary. Our hope as parents is that this administration learns from and recognizes mistakes that were made, be mindful of the words and how they can be very harmful. I have gone back and forth about whether or not to talk to you today, but I felt as a parent I needed to come forward, and I probably sound a bit jumbled because I am emotional and I am upset, but I don't want to incite anger, I really don't want to incite any anger at all. I really think this was a horrible misunderstanding. I have a lot of respect for you here on this board, I have a lot of respect for you as a board. And I have, I have your thoughtful words, I have also used Mr. Swans, I don't know where he is, but I have not fought highly of him, and that's on me, and I will go before my heavenly Father, because I believe in a heavenly Father, and I would have to ask for his forgiveness for things that have gone through my mind about Mr. Swans' actions, about Mr. Haas' actions, I apologize to Mr. Haas. And I take my relationship with the Lord very seriously, because whether you believe in the Lord or not, we will have to stand up for him, and I have to be accountable for my words. So I want to ask all of you to also think about your words, and our faculty and our administrators, to think about the words used when describing our students, when describing my son, who's a wonderful young man, and I could be more proud of him, and I think he has held his head very high through this whole floral experience. He has not said anything unkind, he has not come home and complained about his instructors, he has liked all of his teachers. So I just want to leave that with you, and hopefully in the future, should this happen again, it will be handled quite differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Philbin.
Now, to share, I'm not going to speak about the Intro Ed program tonight. Instead, I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank you, board members, Superintendent Corey, and Principal Swannitz, for your service. It is often a thankless job. The board has been bombarded during public comment in the last several months, mostly negative and highly critical comments. I myself have spoken quite assertedly and passionately about the direction and the cutting of the Intro Ed program, but I did want to acknowledge that I appreciate the fact that you have listened and have given careful consideration to not only my comments but those of others. And so really, it's just, I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for your service to our students and to our teachers and to our community. And I promise not to speak about the Intro Ed program for the remainder of this school year, however, I will be back in 2019 and 20 to make my pleas again. Thank you.
Well, look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Andrews. My concerns are consistently student learning and achievement, that's number one. Children that are intellectually engaged don't get in as much trouble, they're better off socially, emotionally, and all those things. Students are entering school smarter than ever before. IQ is increasing three points every 10 years. The research is compiled in a book called The Rising Curve, too fast to be genetic, they believe it's environmental. I saw in the paper this morning that your high school leads the area in being college rated, but still, it was just a bit over 50%. That's a red flag that there are a lot of students that are not intellectually engaged in school that can cause big problems. Your facility here is very clean and well-maintained. I used your restroom and I was surprised by a big sign about there are dangerous chemicals in that vape. I don't have one. Am I supposed to have one? Is that why you have a big sign in the bathroom? What are your expectations? What do you focus on? Bullying is a big concern for all of us, but particularly young people that are defenseless. It starts with the adults in the room. Your parents and teachers exchanges with students. The situation that happened on this campus that many of us were aware of or are aware of was bullying, among other things. It was bullying by a parent and administrators or educators here. Students are real smart, they see how those situations are handled, and they recognize hypocrisy, and they also recognize what the real expectations are. Bullying is real important, that's something that should be addressed if someone just puts their hand on another person or says something unkind. And I don't mean punitive, but perhaps they could just be kindly brought in and asked to call their parents at the office and explain what had just happened. There are a lot of ways to deal with that, but it should be zero tolerance, starting with the grown-ups. Project-based learning is alarming, maybe a red flag. Are there no grades associated with that? Is there accountability for actual learning? I would like to see the percentages of students that pass the Advanced Placement Calculus test in the spring and also Advanced Placement Chemistry. How are they celebrated? How is that awarded? What you focus on, you will get more up.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Go on now to I and B on the consent agenda, please. Note a change, we have pulled in I of four A on the personnel. I ask for a motion to approve the change. As approved the agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda, deleting I of four A. Thank you very much, Mr. Preston. Do you have a second? Bertis, for the second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Baker?
You may recall from the last board meeting, we never approved a minutes of I of four A. And I was asked to, I was the one requesting to not approve it, I was asked to submit the order that I wanted concerned, which I did. I sent that to you folks on May 4th, about two weeks ago, on May 3rd, I sent that. So I just wanted to defer that to the June board meeting, but for the record, the margin is still not been approved. But for the record, the March minutes have still not been approved.
The March or the April?
March.
Okay. So noted. All right. Discussion, now we call for a vote. Dr. Baker. Mrs. Baker. Mrs. Berdus. Thank you. So, asking the other side. I agree now to see the action agenda. And let's see, number one. Approval of standing news valley in the high school district, 2019-2022 strategic plan.
And we had a discussion about this until last meeting, then multiple presentations. And this is going for approval. Other plans?
Do I have a motion to approve this one? I move to approve the 2019-2022 strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Preston. I have a second. I have a second. Second, thank you, Berdus. Thank you to all the effort that was put into this plan. It is quite impressive.
Thank you.
And I would just add that I know that we're going to have to make sure that all of our other plans mesh together so that we're working to make this a very cohesive document.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Baker. Mrs. Baker. Mrs. Berdus. Mrs. Baker. Now, so, all right, number two. Approval of declaration of leave for fully qualified educators, C O dash five hundred, school.
We are taking care of the additive rule required here. I don't know if that discussion of the board has any questions.
Do you have a motion to approve? I move to approve the declaration of leave for fully qualified educators, 2019-2022. I second the declaration of leave for fully qualified educators. Any discussion? Any discussion? No. Thank you, Dr. Baker. Dr. Baker. Mrs. Baker. Mrs. Berdus. Please. Bye. Very good. Thank you. Let's go on to D, discussion agenda. Let's see. Ms. Ward, you asked to speak to this Measure K, Citizens Oversight Committee member application.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your ability to speak this afternoon. I strongly urge you to approve the application of Mrs. Suzanne Baker to the C O C. She's evenly qualified for a position. Frankly, I believe she's even more qualified than I am. My comment is to follow up on the email that I sent to the C O, to all of you yesterday, and I have not received acknowledgement of it. I was disappointed to see the C O C application is not on the consent agenda or the action agenda as it has been in past meetings. The C O C committee's vacancies have been over six months in violation of our bylaws and education code. How is the community supposed to know about the vacancy with the lack of notification from the district? Santa Barbara Unified School District publishes notices in the Santa Barbara News Press for two weeks, looking to fill vacancies on their C O C committee. For this school, the notice of vacancy is not included in the P T S A newsletter. I cannot find it in the newspapers, nor the homepage of the district's website. It's buried on the Measure K, which takes about four to five clicks to get to it. You have a new playbook for the board, and it talks a lot about community involvement. This is the government's handbook that you're going to discuss later. There's a lot of points, there's four bullet points in this handbook about community involvement. So already, you have been in violation of your board handbook. So now, we have one application submitted by Ms. Baker in the last six months. She represents three constituents of the district that includes a local business, a parent of a child enrolled in the district, and a large community member. Mrs. Baker owns a business, has oversaw a multimillion building project, and worked with large budgets. She's overly qualified. There's no legal statute by law, by bylaws approved by the board in 2016 or Cal Ed Code that disqualifies Mrs. Baker because she's a relative to a school board member. She is not a relative of a district employee and has no financial conflict with the district vendor, contractor, consultant, which would disqualify her. Currently, the C O C consists of five members. Mrs. Baker's application to serve the community should be approved as soon as possible before our next C O C meeting, which is on June 19th. And she should not be treated or discriminated against because she's a relative of a school board member. If you believe that Mrs. Baker is not qualified, then your issue is with the California Education Code and the C O C bylaws and not her application. Maybe you should change the bylaws. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ward, in regards to the lack of notification, actually, you're correct. It's a district responsibility, but in an email to me in April 5th, you asked about the advertising of the vacancies to let you know that we advertised in the local paper several months prior to your inquiry, and we'd be doing it again in April. And you told me not to worry about that, that you would be happy to submit the annual report to the local media for the committees, for the committee as well as link to the application. And all I asked was if you would work with the Citizens Oversight Chair. I'm worried what you did, and your article was posted on April 17th, and it refers to potential members to contact Mrs. Seifer. So, two postings in the paper in the last six months. It's been posted on our website for multiple months. How is that a lack of notification?
Passed, not posted on the website, that it's buried.
Sure. It's supposed to be on the website.
Right, but parents don't know, look there.
But you said there was not appropriate notification. I'm just saying, you actually volunteered with my consent to do that for us, which I greatly appreciate, and that was done in April. We also had a newspaper notification in last fall.
Last fall.
Correct.
But for months, there have been no applications submitted, so there was no co-activity. So finally, I came, I stepped forward in April. I didn't feel that you were going to do anything. So I asked you to publish our annual report as well, and you said, "No, I'm not going to do that."
You volunteered, you said you would do that.
I did, so I.
I told you we were already going to post in April. I said, "We were going to do that," and you said, "I'd be happy to do it." Had you not done that absent your request and your offer, I would have done it. So you said you would take that over for us, and you did.
You did. I just, I really think that it was me offering to do it because I didn't feel like there was any cooperation, and there hadn't been in the past. So I offered to do it. I did a public service announcement to three newspapers. News-Hawk was the only one that published it. The other two newspapers did not publish it.
But I told you we were going to do it in April, and you said you'd be happy to do it coming.
Are you going to do it in May? No? You don't plan on publishing this. So how are you going to plan any more committees members? And how are you going to follow the law if you're not going to help reach out to the community?
We have made a reasonable attempt, and we would continue to make these work requests to get people to apply on the committee.
But an advertisement in the newspaper is not going to.
You choose.
Or how about the P T A newsletter that goes out every month? David, you can start there.
Okay. Sure. So the reason this is on discussion is we do have a unique situation where we have, and so we're not comfortable making a recommendation. We have the Mrs. Baker, who is the spouse of a board member, and the board is tasked with approving millions in Measure K. The Oversight Committee is tasked with overseeing and providing accountability to the board. It's a very unique situation. And even though Ms. Ward's correct is not violating the technical aspect of the law, it certainly is worthy of a discussion, given that it's the spouse of the board that is making those decisions. So like I said before, that's why it's not in consent, nor on the action item. I thought it was worthy of a discussion, given that there is such a close connection between the applicant and the agent of the district.
Okay, so I, I'm really glad that we have the opportunity to discuss this. I don't have any questions about whether Mrs. Baker is in any way qualified to be on the C O C. And I know, working with that team, that they're a great group of people. There may not be a conflict. There may not be a conflict of interest technically, but I think one should always look at perception. So that's the only thing that kind of holds me back. I'm not saying that I wouldn't consider this. And we do have the opportunity to take action in the next meeting, which is June 11th, which is before the next C O C meeting, should we choose to do so.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. There are several people in the community who came to my husband, who was a C P A, asking to serve on that, and his concern would be being on the board. He said it's an appearance of conflict of interest. He did not feel comfortable doing that. That would be an ethical violation. He thinks that follows these things. So I kind of understand the concern here. He even talked to some legal people. They said that it was an appearance of conflict of interest, and probably not fly. So that's why he decided not to. So I agree with Mr. Preston. I'm sure Mrs. Baker is highly qualified. You know, it's too bad I can't, Mr. Aaron's routine, so if indeed we decide, that's a concern.
I share, there's something left to say, I share that same feeling of having served on this board with some people that have felt there's been some conflicts, and I don't think we need to move forward by doing such a thing.
My comments are the following. Number one, Suzanne cannot be here tonight because she's out of town and visited. Suzanne's a little disappointed, Scott, that you or anybody else has reached out to her to talk with her about this. Tonight is the first discussion that there's been, and that's unfortunate. Number two, whenever there's a discussion of conflict of interest, the conflict arises only when, by virtue of their position, one or both of the party stands to benefit financially because of their position. So because you folks say that there's an appearance of a conflict, even if there is no real conflict, realizing I'm a plastic surgeon, what are you suggesting if Suzanne gets on the C O C, I'm going to be doing more aggressive tests?
Sure.
I'm not.
Sure.
I would like to know a hypothetical on where the mischief could get into by virtue of my wife being on this rule committee. You know, I would hope that everybody else on this table had a problem when our first lady in the United States, Hillary Clinton, was testifying before Congress, was promoting Hillary here. Was that then not a conflict of interest? I don't recall.
I think that's true in these conversations.
I do, and that's why it's hard time to talk, and you'll be able to rebut. But I don't think there was a conflict there because neither she nor her husband stood to financially gain from it. The only reason Suzanne was applying is because her love of the community and her love of the school. I don't see there along the lines of people asking to be placed on that committee, but rather, what I do see is that there's been vacancies on that committee for a protracted period of time. Frankly, I think what's going on here is if I had not had some diversion opinions with this board, some rather vocal opinions in disagreement with this board, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
So I would disagree with that. And I'll, you know, in your example, I would imagine if my wife was one of the applicants, that there would be significant questions about that.
But you're an employee.
I would have, excuse me. And he's an agent of the district. Who was voting on.
No, eight.
So if Tori, who has husband, is also in the qualified, I would have the same objection. This is not unique just to you. I would have the same concern, and it would also be placed in another discussion.
But we don't know that for a fact. I mean, does he seem to make that statement?
Like, am I the other? So if Tori's husband was an applicant, it would be a discussion. I would have the same conversation.
It's a legal thing, for my husband, it's an appearance of conflict of interest.
Well, Scott, we might have talked about this before. You said that you were ready to get a legal opinion on that.
So I already stated, it is correct that there is no technical thing that says that she cannot be on. But we have, I believe we have the duty to operate above the appearance of conflict. So that is where my.
So, and as I said, and I don't draw the question, I will ask it in the name of the answer. I would like a hypothetical situation that could arise where by virtue of the fact that my wife is on the C O C committee, that she can get in.
I've stated, for the reasons of appearance, I believe it's something that warrants a discussion.
I just want to make a comment that the C O C is not a little. Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying. Now, maybe that was just taken, maybe I'm taking that out of context. But these people have been working very hard, and it's pretty complicated. It is, it really is. And so I just want to say, for the benefit of Michelle and Lynn and everyone else that is on that, and having been on that committee and shared that committee and worked with the superintendent to develop the agenda, it is some serious work, and we work extremely well together. I don't have any doubt in my mind that Suzanne would not do the same. I think the best would be, I would just like to have time to think about it. And we have time to think about it.
Well, we don't, because even though Suzanne has not authorized me to do this, I'm not going to subject her to public humiliation. It's obviously going to be a rejection of applications, so.
Oh, I think that's my subject.
I go ahead and review for applications.
Well, based on the.
Okay. Well, turn around, number two. Government's hand on the first meeting.
So I have a, we have a product that was produced as a result of a session that we have, or going back some time, actually, and we have not had an opportunity to visit this. I am asking the board, and we, there are some things, and the draft was presented, it's still in some work. And so I am asking that we have an opportunity to engage in that work, in working with Jan and bringing a draft to the board for further discussion, because I think there are some things, and some other examples, that would be helpful as we move forward. So if you have that draft, I would ask for some more time and solicit suggestions and input from the board to bring back another draft to the board. And this is something that we might have in place, and we're going to do it by the time we start the meeting in August.
I just want to make one comment. I mean, I, I don't even want to comment on it. If you're going to use it as something that you refer to, I would like just a simple thing, is changing the format on it. And there are so darn many words on the page. It's, it's like, I think it needs to be changed in that regard. There's spelling errors, and I don't think that it really fully reflects the good work that we did that day in January at our board workshop to develop this.
I agree. I was reading, I was very disappointed. I'm very disappointed. It's incomplete sentences, and just, it definitely needs a lot of work.
Okay, so do we have a motion to, Mr. Ward, to move us back for a second?
Um, here, here.
I would say.
Yeah, I mean, you can simply, you can simply direct me to.
Okay, okay.
Just direct me to.
Do we have to bring this back in, in Jan's side? Do you think so? Great. Then I.
I'll shoot for that very first meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. We have two requests to speak from Ms. Bell, Ms. Waylon, and Ms. Deb, I'm sorry about that. Anyways, I apologize, like, time to speak on that has already passed. So I'll be before the board agenda, but thank you. All right. E, Lord Matherston. The approval of the curriculum code, co-curriculum code contract.
We had a discussion presentation for last meeting, and she's coming back for your approval.
Approve the co-curriculum code, everyone?
I move to approve the curriculum code in contact.
Second. It's discussion.
Yes. Have we already discussed this tonight, or is this what we're talking about? A subject, approval of course, of our teachers, associate teachers.
Consent.
Consent.
So Amy, you gave us a presentation in depth. Presentation in the last board meeting. I'd certainly be interested in my questions regarding this. So I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that it's been around this. Any further discussion?
Dr. Bailey, Mrs. Bailey, Chris, Mrs. Burris. All right, for upcoming board meeting dates, a reminder that we have two meetings in June. On June eleventh, it's a special meeting for the L-PAD, the L-code, we have a period for the L-PAD. It's the eleventh, and then the twenty-fifth will be, June will be our regular board meeting. All meetings, of course, are held here, it's recorded. We're coming up with senior graduation on the big day thirty-first. We have the Buvo High School graduation at eleven a.m., and the Blue Theater. Atmo graduation at four p.m. in the high school.
Sure, I'll try and answer that.
Absolutely. All right, F. Board comments and correspondence. I just have one comment. Scott, can we, is there any brief update on the facility thing?
So I was actually, I was going to do that, I have superintendent's.
Oh, that's okay.
Are you granting me an extension?
I've granted you to give this, I'm asking.
Yes.
Thank you.
So actually, we had. So a couple things, so the construction update. We are in possession of stamped, which means approved plans for the division of state architect for both, for entire scopeal work for this next storm, including the HAB work to be done, and the herb service, and new addition for cafeteria. So that's, we're hustling, because we are, we're, we have some timelines, we can, we can, we're going to get, get rolling. We can have those in here, we've got the job locked, we're just, and we're working on soliciting those things. Okay, so that's going to be, that's going to be a big, big deal. Also, under electrical, we've had some issues with the old wiring. And we are going to continue, we had a special meeting, if you recall, just last week, to approve some of the work that you've done to replace that old wiring. We're going to continue to do that in the course of the next two weekends. We have some other things that need to be replaced, to get all switched here, or be replaced with intercase font. But it's the electrically, old electrical that is causing some issues right now. So we're going to be working to replace that within the common items that was approved by the board, the special meeting, so we're moving kind of that. And then some other views on the CTE facilities planning grant. That is the three million dollar grant for new construction relating to our restaurant program that we submitted for back in last October. We are heading for the state allocation board on the twenty-second. That's a significant step towards, they will make decisions for projects to be approved, and hopefully funding after that. So we're in a good position, there's a lot of competition, I believe, listening very long for projects that are coming before the state allocation board. We'll give a good shot to anybody, so we're waiting rather anxiously for that.
I call for the order of the day.
Actually, you can't, as, as a republic, you're not allowed to do that.
Uh, I, it's Robert's rules, and I, and I was told I couldn't speak, I couldn't address an item. Your instructions say, "As it is discussed," on each agenda item, "as it is discussed." So I believe you're out of order. I'd like to make a second request to address the item, because I gave my card as it was being discussed.
We don't want to stifle voices, that was the way I interpreted, but please go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity. Again, my name is David Andrews, and the issue was a person that had applied to be on your advisory council. And I think maybe it's getting a little too far out in the weeds. This is a parent of a student who lives in the area, that's very concerned about student learning and achievement. This is not the spouse of an employee, there won't be conflicts of interest as far as monetary. This is someone that is a mom, that's very concerned about student learning and achievement. And I think, just from what I have observed, that needs to be raised a little bit higher on the agenda. I urge you to support a mom that has great concerns about student learning and achievement. Obviously, the whole family does. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. All right, we're back to board comments and correspondence. We have a class. Before, I'm sorry, I, I would like to make a motion to keep our commentary to three minutes total per board member.
Number one, this is not the opportunity to put forward a motion.
Yes, I can. To do this right during the board conference.
So I'm just keeping that motion.
I haven't given that motion.
Second, that motion.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes. Why?
We have members of the public who are allowed three minutes to speak, and I think we all should be able to keep our comments to that point, too. We have three minutes, it's quite a bit of time in order for us to be able to prove what ideas and discuss it. So that's why I'm asking.
So does the reporter should have been allowed only three minutes to do this presentation?
He has also an extension.
The review show people should only be allowed three minutes.
It's not what you're saying.
Those are the directors' special presentations, and we allocate extra time for that, and it's not for the comments.
Well, in the session, so I can participate as well.
This is precious, because what I'm going to talk about tonight, are items that I've been trying for weeks to get on the board agenda, and as which has been refused. The only opportunity I have to talk about these items is during this time, the board comments and correspondence agenda. And now you're only stifling by saying, "Dr. Baiki, you only have three minutes."
Well, not the rest of us all get three minutes, too.
And that's not regular. Because you know, for the past several months, I'm the one that's been taking advantage of that opportunity. Why did you not make this recommendation the very first month you were on the board?
I was meeting the board.
I mean, is everybody, is everybody so concerned that they've got to get all the time to watch their favorite TV show? Who cares how, who cares how long the board meeting lasts?
I think you bring up a good point, John, but I really take issue with that. I think that you're talking about five people that have volunteered, whether it's me being appointed or being elected to serve on this board. I think we spend a lot of time, a lot of energy preparing for these board meetings.
Okay, so John Baiki takes ten minutes instead of three minutes. That extra seven minutes, is that a big of a deal?
It could be, because sometimes it's, it could be five minutes.
Then you can leave, you don't have to stay until the very end.
No, I'm not going to leave, because I want to hear.
What you say, it could be a big deal.
And I'd like. Question. So we have a motion, we have a second.
And when is my term to speak?
There's no item on there, just one.
There's no item, so did.
You didn't preference what you wanted to talk about.
I said, I told you in.
I was trying to listen to Dr. Bailey.
Okay, so I'll read right now. On your motion to silence the board member.
Not silenced.
This is an atrocity. You are all elected officials. You didn't sign up for two-hour board meetings, you signed up for a board meeting. Why do you feel like you need to go home? There's so much work to be done. This school is, I mean, from the reports today, there's money to be raised for this swimming pool. Obviously, there's not a lot of community sport, uh, support for this swimming pool. They haven't raised a lot of money from the communities, there's not a lot of communities, the community is not excited about this school. Dr. Baiki knocked door to door to get elected. I don't know about all of you, but he, he is not, he's been mandated by the community to, to, to serve, to serve the students. And his priority is academics and safety. He said, "I don't know why you want to silence him." This is a freedom of speech, says the country. And now you are trying to stifle his freedom of speech, and you're an elected board. I have never seen this happen. I attended, I've attended many board supervisor meetings, I've attended a lot of Santa Barbara School District meetings. I've never seen anything like this, it's unprecedented. This should be in the front page of the newspaper, that Tori Babcock wants to stifle the freedom of speech of Dr. Baiki. That's basically what you're doing. Because we can speak for three minutes, and I understand that, that's just become, to keep the meetings orderly. But if you're an elected board, you have all the research at your hands, you need to discuss. That's what's really important. We don't want you just to be here doing, you know, just voting yes, everything that the superintendent tells you to vote yes to. We want to hear a discussion. We want to have thoughtful speech here. And, and Dr. Baiki has thoughtful speech. I don't know why you even want to be on the board. You're calling yourself volunteers, but you are volunteering, you're serving the community, and you're elected officials. And this is a board meeting, and board meetings don't happen unless to their time. Dr. Baiki wants to speak, let him speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. This is just at the end, comments at the end of our meetings. This does not keep anybody, the board member, anybody else from commenting on other parts of the agenda. So I'll clarify that, okay? This is your closing remarks, board comments in the end. Well, anything else?
I have this, I'm, I'm sorry that this is going in this direction. I, I respect, and I've learned a lot from John. I listen to everything that he has to say, I spend a lot of time preparing for these meetings. And I kind of take issue with the fact that it sort of appears that we're trying to get out of here in two hours. We're not trying to get out, I'm not, I'm not, I am not trying to get out of here in two hours. I am trying to do the best that I can that benefits students, to keep the district solvent, to listen to all board members, and to learn from one another. And I truly, I truly feel that way. So I think it's kind of important that we don't get too far off track here. It's a request, it's a notion, then it'd be three minutes. That's all. That, that's it.
No, it's not, that's not it. It is, I've been trying for months to get these items on the agenda, and month after month after month, they're not going on the agenda. The only opportunity John Baiki has to be able to talk to the community, to talk to you folks in a legal way, is now boiled down to the board comments and correspondence agenda. And now you want to limit that to three minutes? I'm sorry, but you have not done a good job of convincing me that. I'm not, I'm not telling you, you have not, you have not convinced me that the motivation for this motion is not somehow to silence me, or at least quell what I want to be able to say.
John, I am not trying to silence you. If you don't believe that, there isn't anything that I can do about it. I am not trying to silence you. I respect what you have said, and I take issue with that, that you think that I don't respect what you have to say. Okay, so let's be clear for the public, and for board, and for administration. I respect what you have to say.
Well, you can say that, Lee, but frankly, frankly, the words you said at the last closed meeting were completely contrary to what you just told all these people.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I'll be more than happy to remind you. You had said you would submit multiple agenda items, we go Friday. You and I had a conversation about the deadline.
Yeah, not the deadline.
And you did. I received no agenda items.
Okay. Suspecting that that was going to be the challenge I had over at tonight.
What does that mean?
That I was not, that the reason for my items not being on tonight's agenda is because I didn't meet the.
I didn't even see your agenda.
Okay, I'm going to show you the email.
So typically, is it going to tell me how you board president makes those decisions, except current? Regarding what's in it?
Yes.
To meet the deadline, you had received it by May fourth, I sent it to you Friday, May third.
I did not receive this.
I'll read it for the record. Scott.
We don't have to read it for the.
No, I prefer John.
I did not receive those via email.
Well, here's the stamp.
I did not receive those via email.
Okay, do we have a motion, the second of the board's, we need a discussion? So I think to go for vote?
Yep. Dr. Bailey?
Nay.
Mrs. Bailey?
Aye.
Mrs. Burris?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a Brown Act violation, this was not agendized for public comment, so people could come to the meeting and speak. So that's a Brown Act violation.
Do we have anybody else who just wants to speak for three minutes? Mrs. Burris?
No, I'll pose the number one.
Uh, we are going to move now into closed session. We will be discussing superintendent's evaluation of the number forty-five, number fifty-seven, and the conference for the lead of the council, highly anticipated litigation. And we reconvene in open session, and whatever action we take in closed session. Thank you so much, everybody.